Okay, it is 6:02. I'd like to call the meeting of the Woodbury Select Board for December 11th, 2023, to order. Have a motion?
Yes, I will second the motion or make the motion?
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion is seconded and the meeting is active. Any adjustments to the Select Board agenda as published?
I had one I was gonna put in. I don't want to make this meeting longer and hold you up. Okay, um, do you want me to tell you what it is?
Yes, please.
So, um, I wanted to talk about getting going on the process of replacing the boiler in the town office, um, because it was brought to our attention that it's a safety issue. Um, so that's it.
Okay, um, can we put that? Where can we put that? Can we do that after the town clerk's report, please? Is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other adjustments to the current Select Board agenda? Okay, hearing none, uh, we have the approval of bills and payroll orders, which we have in front of us. We are going to work on these immediately after the meeting. The minutes from the November 27th meeting?
Don't have them.
Oh, yeah.
We do not have those, so they will also have to be approved after the meeting. Any other general public comment? All right, so, um, next on the agenda is Steve Murphy for Woodbury Library Board. He's not available at the moment, so we're gonna move...
Oh, here he is.
Hey. Steve, we're gonna make you wait for a minute.
Sure.
Is that all right? All right. Uh, Ms. Brandy, could we do the town? Well, actually, uh, Mrs. Turkey, can we do the town treasurer, town clerk's report, please?
Yeah, I've gotten a lot of the appropriation requests for the town report. I'm waiting on maybe a half dozen.
Oh, great.
And then we should be good for that.
That's terrific.
Yep. And my recording is up to date. That's basically what I've been working on, is my town report stuff in the recording.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, um. Ms. Brandy, could we do the treasurer's report, please?
Do we want to sneak in the boiler?
I would like to sneak in the boiler with that.
Oh, with mine?
With yours.
I don't know anything about it, but...
Okay. What?
Balance sheet, financial statement, due to, due from, um, that I passed out. Cash receipts over the last two weeks took in nineteen thousand, six hundred, fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, delinquencies, copies, recording, vault fee, sale of lots for the cemetery, et cetera. Um, expenses, payroll the last two weeks, ten thousand, five hundred, thirty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Accounts payable today, fifteen thousand, eight hundred, seven dollars and thirty-six cents. I transferred twenty thousand from the money market over into checking to cover bills. And of course, lots of goodies going on with the budget, um, other things. Yeah, unless there's any questions.
Is that a normal rate of transfer this time of year? Or are we heavy?
Um, not really.
Not really normal?
It's not a heavy.
Not really heavy?
Right, until more things start flowing in. And of course, with a lot of our bills, um, are, is FEMA oriented.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why it's...
This is the light.
It's still high.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Smith? Mr. Murphy, would you?
Boiler, uh, should I sneak that in to hers?
We can sneak it in now. We were gonna sneak it in. Let's sneak it in.
I'll be soon, real quick, with that. So, the insurance company recommended that we replace the boiler. Um, Robin, myself and Diana went to the town office just to kind of like look at the work that needed to be done and kick around ideas of prioritization for it. Um, and Gary Clark, who I guess is a plumbing system, heating system expert.
Knowledgeable.
Came and, um, looked at it with us. So, one of the things that he noticed is the boiler, the fire brick inside the firebox is cracked, which he said is a danger. I asked him how immediate of a danger, and he didn't really give an answer, but it seems like it's something that needs to be prioritized, especially because it, you know, we haven't even gotten the ball rolling, so I don't know how long the process will take. So, we are gonna get, I think, if I'm reading this insurance report right, we're gonna get a little over two grand to replace the boiler, which doesn't really seem
That doesn't...
Like it's gonna be enough, but I don't know because I haven't priced them. Um, so I guess I was kind of looking for everybody's blessing to start the process, talk to Gary more, get some pricing. I've got a plumber I could reach out to, like, just kind of start, um, shopping, I guess.
Yeah, so our insurance was gonna give us two thousand dollars?
If I read this right, and I have it here...
The last B signed off saying it was great and it was in good shape, so...
So maybe we could get another opinion, but like when Gary looked at it, he was like, oh yeah, the fire brick's cracked. And I was like, well, could we just replace the fire brick? And I'm, this got a little foggy for me, but I'm pretty sure the answer was yes, but that due to the age of the furnace, it maybe didn't make sense. I could verify that with him.
Okay.
Um, but I think what, what we kind of came to at the end of the conversation was that it should be replaced.
The entire system?
The, well, just the, um, just the boiler itself, the furnace itself? So like the ducting is fine, like all that stuff is, he had some suggestions for improving it, um, but there were no issues. Um, it was really just the furnace and I feel like...
Well, I would...
Oh, here we go. Uh, so I don't know, I may not be reading this right, but I took it that this is how much money they're gonna give us to remove and replace it, which doesn't really seem like a lot. And that's for the, so this is the duct work, but according to Gary, it really didn't need anything ductwork-wise. But maybe we can steal from some of the other items that are less important, was kind of what I was thinking.
Okay.
Question.
Yes, please.
Something like efficiency Vermont or something like that would have a program to replace furnace, boiler, that might be more energy efficient, blah, blah, blah. And there might be some money available from them for that.
Um, yeah, I could, I guess, reach out to them, or if anybody else has worked closely with them and, um, wants to do that, it sure would be worth looking into. I guess my only concern is if we postpone it long enough, like there's this possibly dangerous situation that is, you know, just like still there.
Well, I think I could send an email to somebody at efficiency Vermont.
And I think that we should also pursue some quotes.
Okay.
At the same time.
So I'll reach out to Gary then?
If you are willing to do that, that'd be great. If you're willing to do that, that'd be great.
Cool, and I'll, I'll go through Gary. He offered to sort of be our like point person on this, since he's an expert, so...
Let's, let's see what he can get for a quote for a replacement.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I think that that would be the next best step.
Okay.
To be honest. Because replacing that system is not gonna cost us two thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So, Lucy, what I would do is probably CC you on that, or maybe the whole select board, and then?
Okay.
I would select, yeah, I would do the whole select board if you're willing to, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, Michael, thank you so much. Um, all right, so we'll back up a little bit. Uh, Mr. Murphy, would you do the Woodbury Library Board requests, please?
Sure. Hey, can I see it for everybody?
I can't get it turned out to you.
You've got...
Steve, I got your email, but it was like a minute before I left for here, so I'm sorry. You probably haven't even seen my response.
No, thanks so much.
Anyone else want to?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So, let's see. For the library, all right, the first, the first item I'd like to start with is the budget. We approved the proposed budget at our last meeting, and I submitted that to Brandy at a request. First, I'll just briefly recap the activities of the library. I think we've had a very good year, starting back, uh, last town meeting. We had a good promotion of town meetings, civics and government, cooperation with the school. We have the mock town meeting at the elementary school here. Throughout the year, Myrna, the library director, has been great in inviting, welcoming the community in. Some great programs, Pollinator Program, um, there have been poetry readings, uh, we had a reading from a local writer on Dave Morse, he's a sports journalist. Lots of coordinated activities with the school. We had, uh, we, we had, we had a great pie breakfast back in the spring. We had movie, our movie night series over the summer. And now we just started developing a project, again, in coordination with school, um, on the subject of auto racing. And we hope to, we hope to have the culmination of this with an event at the library, uh, not at the library, sorry, at school, uh, where students can demonstrate their works in open house, demonstrating their project, and with a featured speaker. Hopefully, someone who's a prominent rate auto racer in Vermont, Governor Scott, uh, we may be sending an invitation, so, um. So we've got a lot in the works. I think we've had a good year, so now I'll just get to the numbers here with the budget. We are requesting an increase this year over last year's budget of one thousand, eight hundred, fifty dollars, and I'll explain that. Over the past, I believe it's eight years, we have been drawing from a donation, which was made through the Eleanor Angel Fund. I believe it was made in two thousand, fifteen for twenty-five thousand dollars. So I believe we've proportioned about five thousand dollars per year. And we've got more mileage out of that grant because our activity slowed down during COVID, so we didn't draw down five thousand every year. But looking at our budget, this budget year, '24, we anticipate using the remainder of that fund, and it's two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. So that essentially won't be there next year. So we're short in our operations of two thousand, five hundred, fifty-five dollars. We looked over the budget, all of our expenses, and we think that we can, we think that we can provide adequate services, um, with an, with eighteen hundred and fifty dollars of that twenty-five, fifty-five. I, I, I think the difference there, why you might ask, why didn't you ask for twenty-five, fifty-five if you're, if you're not gonna have that next year? I think we, we are anticipating, um, having a little extra in the budget, um, left over from, um, salaries, wages, so there's some difference there. So I think most, if not all, of the services will be kept at the level. So, that's, that's that. And we, we itemized on the budget, um, where we will be applying that eighteen fifty, uh, in lieu of the Eleanor Angel Fund. Computer expenses, uh, computer maintenance, books, um, ebooks, and programs, so. Any questions about the library in general, or the budget specifically? No? Okay, so we, we submit that for your approval, and then on to the town for their consideration at, at town meeting.
Thank you for the, thank you for the detailed budget.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Uh, the next item, let's see, here. That's to request your support at this point for a potential application for a grant, and I'll explain that grant, and, well, I'll explain the grant and what it, what it will be used for. The grant, um, will be provided by the federal government to the Vermont Department of Libraries to administer throughout the state to Vermont libraries. We are a municipal library. I don't know if it also applies to private libraries, that's, um, I guess that's beside the point right here. So, the Vermont Department of Libraries will be administering these grants. Some of the purposes of these grants are to ensure that libraries continue their operations. So it could be for maintenance of the structure of the building, the roof, the foundation, the exterior. Some of it is to improve air quality, some of these funds are apportioned from COVID relief. So there are, there are a variety of purposes for these grants, and we, we believe that we would qualify. Some of them are for small rural libraries, so we certainly meet that. So anyway, we considered our needs, I know we were here, it was back in the spring, to talk about the potential of this grant, and at the time, we, the board declined to take any further steps until we had considered it more. So we have, we've considered it more, we've looked at the criteria for the grant, and there's really two tracks here for, for this application. One is, um, practical, one is aspirations, okay? So I'm here to talk about the practical one. The aspirations are for potential, uh, you know, maybe an enlargement, maybe enclose the front area so patrons can put their boots there during the winter. Myrna talks about how during the winter, there's a lot of, um, mittens, hats, snowpants and gloves that just kind of pile up and inside the doorway. But, so that's the aspiration. I'm not here to talk about that right now, I, we haven't made headway on that. But on practical matters, okay? Practical matters, so we're talking about maintenance, maintenance of the structure, okay? We've had two assessments, inspections done. The first was by House Right Solutions, fellow named Harrison Bush. He came out, it was a complimentary inspection, he came out in August, he wrote up a report, and he ultimately concluded that he, he couldn't be helpful to us. I believe he's based out of Waterbury, the distance was too far, and he specializes more in, um, interior systems, um, HVAC, air quality and so forth. He does have knowledge of, of construction, general construction, but he thought that he wouldn't be the best fit here for this project. So, we asked Larry Eldred, who is the former longtime custodian of the school and the superintendent of buildings in the, uh, school district, the elementary school district. It's now called Mountain View, it used to be called Orleans Southwest Union Elementary School District, OSU ESD. So we talked to Larry Eldred, who has a long, um, and very detailed knowledge of these buildings, the school in this building. So he came over and did an inspection, and his findings were largely consistent with Harrison's, and this is what, this is what we'd like to focus on here, talking about these practical matters for the building. The first, these are repairs. Larry listed needed repairs and suggested upgrades. The first one is these two doors. These, these doors, we can see right, without getting out of our chair, the bottom of that door is rusted, there's a, there's a gaping, like, crack in the side of that one. Some of, some of the rusting here and the wear on this door is due to the grating in the back. Overtime, um, leaves falling, grass clippings getting blown up against the building. If we were to walk around the building, if there weren't snow there, we would see that the grating of, of the ground itself has come up, and it's, um, it's starting to rot some of the, the siding boards down near grade. So anyway, so back to the doors, um, Larry concludes that these two doors should be replaced, um, and we, we agree, you know, the library board agrees. And there's molding around the door that's worn, too. So number two is remove eight to 10 inches at the bottom of the exterior, the cladding around the building, and improve it, upgrade it with some flashing, so we don't have a repeat of this problem. So it'd be some metal flashing, and drip cap and a splashboard. So these are, from my understanding, standard construction techniques, and we'd apply them here. This building has held up great over the years, it's constructed by our neighbors, um, people in town made this building at a time when, when they needed to expand the school, so, um, we feel a duty to preserve it, so. So there we go. So some of the trim boards around the exterior, um, gable vent at the south end of the library. Just by, by the way, I just want to tell you, as part of this inspection, I went up into the attic. It's very orderly up there, if you ever get a chance. Go up in the attic of the library in the community room, jump at the chance. The cables are neatly stapled to the rafters, there's blown-in cellulose insulation. Someone cares, someone cares about, about this building. So anyway, gable vent up there, we, uh, I'll just say, Michael will probably know about this, we needed to have the roof replaced on this building two or three years ago. Thankfully, the roofers found that there was no rotting with the decking, the plywood underneath the shingles, so every, it was sound up there, and that indicates that there's proper ventilation, that moisture isn't getting trapped up there and rotting that, that decking. So, good job whoever, whoever set that up. So the attic's in good shape, gable vent, um, I don't, I don't know why Larry suggested that, I could let you...
I know why.
All right, okay, here we go.
I believe it was at the suggestion of the guy whose report is in here, uh, Harrison.
Okay.
I think he mentioned that Harrison had mentioned it, but he also thought that it would be a good idea.
Okay, okay, okay. Belt and suspenders, I guess, okay. Gable vent. Seal and caulk the exterior and repaint. Again, it doesn't take much, just walking around the building to see that over the years, the, the painting has worn, it's chipped in places, um, and there's, I'd say some, some places moderate, but mostly minor decay in some of the wood and trim, but some caulking and paint would preserve the rest of what's there that's in there. Regrade it, the next one is northern, north, and the eastern side of the community room should be regraded to allow better drainage, and that would also, or could also include a French drain in what they call daylight, essentially put a drain in, run the pipe off the back of the bank, so it's grading down near the, the rink back there, right over the bank. So, grade that, and, um, while we're doing, while, that's about an eight, uh, let's see. Yeah, Larry said there's some other potential repairs, but we didn't, we didn't think it rose to level of, um, addressing right now. For example, um, you could excavate more around the slab and apply insulating foam, but Larry said it may, uh, it may cost more than you'd see in a, in a return, in, in any gain. It might, might be costing you more in the long run, it's saving you. So, anyway, so, so there we are with some improvements, and then if you flip over that page, we go over to the costs. Larry said, uh, and I should say, I should say, Larry compiled this estimate free of charge, he donated his time, um, in, in putting this together, and we, we thank you, Larry, for that. Um, we, we, in the course of, of considering this, we asked him if he'd be interested in being a clerk of the works, because we on, on the Board of Trustees don't have expertise, and we think it would be beyond, beyond our ability to manage this project. So he said that he would, he would be interested in that. So if we look at the estimates here for this work, um, the total is two, twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. Larry said budgeted in approximately one thousand dollars for her, for his services as clerk of the works. So we're, we're at about twenty-one thousand, five hundred, that we would potentially seek in a grant from the Department of Libraries. And I say potentially because the grant, uh, applications have not been released yet. They're anticipated to be released at the end of December, so just in a couple of weeks, or at the beginning of the new year. So I just wanted to come here and essentially give you an update on this, and ask, because it's the town's building, it's not the library building, so ultimately, the Select Board has authority over this project. Ask if you, if, if we can proceed based on these, these estimates and the scope of work. And by proceed, I mean...
Write the grant.
Well, write the grant and see if, what the conditions are in the grant. So before we submitted any grant, we would come back here and say, okay, we've gone through the grant, we've nearly completed it, or we've just begun, and here, um, you know, here's what we're anticipating. So here to, to ask if, um, well, first, if you have any questions.
I think you had a question, we both...
Yeah.
Is there a match, town match with the grant?
We don't know. We don't know. I, I can say this, though, that the Department of Libraries, um, they had some information sessions, um, there was, there was a video online, which I watched, where they're explaining the purpose of the grant, um, and they were really encouraging in libraries to come out, because this is, um, you know, it's, it's a once in a, once in a great while occasion where there's just gonna be this much federal money coming to the state to dis, to disperse to the library. So they're really, really encouraging, and they said, um, you know, like I said, there were various purposes for this grant, so, um, we, we looked at that and we think they might be eligible. So, um, we, we don't know about matching, uh, conditions right now.
I would fully support that.
I would as well.
Okay.
My only other question is, does the, the writing on the grant stipulate that infrastructure is okay?
I believe, I believe it is. I believe that that's, do you mean, is that eligible for grant infrastructure?
Yes.
I believe it is.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've looked at this many times, the...
Not as common that infrastructure is part of one of these grants.
Yeah.
So if this is the case, we should take advantage of it, for sure.
One of the purposes is to, to preserve the structure.
Okay.
To keep the libraries in place, and, um, yeah, any more questions? I, I do have two, two more points. Lucy, I just want to ask you, I sent you an email.
Yeah.
Okay.
And yes, dear... And yes, dear, your question was, the answer was yes.
And I'll, I'll explain what my question was to Lizzie. Larry, in getting this quote together, had a difficult time getting contractors to, to answer his call and to come out and give him quotes. I, 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 I don't think that's unique to Woodbury. I don't think people are not wanting to come to Woodbury to do work here. I think there's just a general shortage in the area. People are busy. But someone that did answer his call to, to get an idea of the cost in this was Lizzie. So, I think it's important, and I think you do too, just for transparency here, to say that some of this estimate is based on some, some input or quote you gave to Larry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's that. And the second point I just want to bring up, we don't need to, we don't need to get in too far into this tonight. We can come back another time, talk quite a bit about this. Is the fact that the school, through the memorandum of understanding with the town, manages the community room here. The library is independent over there. The town owns the building. But the school leases, I'm sorry, the school district leases both the school and through the memorandum of understanding, this room. So, that's something I think we could work out cooperatively. I can say, you know, in my experience on the board, working with the school has been great. The administrators, the teachers, and the facilities. You know, the maintenance, we've, we've all been working cooperatively, just as we hoped we would years ago when, when the school district merged and we decided to, to go with the lease rather than conveyance of the property. That's a whole other issue. But, so it's been working well. And, and I'm confident that it can continue to do so. And we can find a way, if we get this money, to work on the building.
Mr. Gray?
In the memorandum of understanding that you just mentioned, the town is responsible for the upkeep of this building.
Okay.
At the school.
Oh, so it might not be an issue at all?
It shouldn't be an issue.
Shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Okay. Any, any more questions or comments on that?
Just a thank you for all the work that you guys do.
Yes, thank you so much.
Stuff you put together for the community.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a pleasure, it really is. I'm not done. Uh, this is quick. Okay. Last year, before the pre-town meeting forum, and that is usually the, the weekend preceding town meeting, the Select Board convenes a, a meeting, I don't know if it's technically a meeting, called a forum last year, to discuss the agenda where the community can come and ask questions and maybe debate some of the stuff. But it's, there's no voting that happens here. It's an informational session where people can talk. And last year, we, we had it at the town hall. Unfortunately, there was a big storm the night before. But some brave souls, some hardy Woodburians came up. And we still had a pretty good group. I, I forget, I think we got together at eight o'clock. But town government talk, it's intended to really talk about the experience of either serving in town government or interacting with town government. Not so much the administrative stuff, but just the human experience of it. And they're, they're intertwined. But it, and it's, I think, a time to acknowledge that you guys at the tables up here are, are doing like, sometimes very difficult and thankless work. And, and it's, it's, it's nice to understand what you're doing and acknowledge and appreciate that. So, anyway, I'm, I'm here to ask if we can, again, if the library can again sponsor and hold a town government talk in the one hour preceding the pre-town meeting forum.
I don't see any reason why not.
I think it would be great.
I enjoyed it last year.
Great.
So...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Finally, finally, as your town moderator, I would, I would like to, and I say I would like to because the, the meeting is under the authority of the Select Board and then further it's administered by the town clerk. And moderated by the moderator. I, I would like to have a special guest or attendees to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. In preparing for last year's town meeting, I went back and watched videos at HCTV, thank you. And at one of them, we had two Boy Scouts lead the, lead the assembly in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I, 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 I felt it was very moving to have honorees at that special moment in the meeting to, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I don't, I don't have anyone right now, but I just, I just wonder if I could go out and seek some, some honored attendees to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll come back and seek your approval for that.
I think we'll take that under consideration.
Sure, I guess, yeah.
Right?
I mean, I, I think it sounds great.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, okay, all right. And last item. This is, this is following guidance in the Secretary of State's Handbook for Moderators that, that advises moderators to work with the Select Board in informing the questions that are on the agenda for the meeting. Not in a substantive manner, not the substance, but in order to make the procedure at the meeting smooth. And I'm here, again, based on my experience at town meetings and watching past years of videos, there are, there is predictably some points at the meeting where procedurally we get hung up. And I believe that people are not there to hammer through procedure and Robert's Rules. They're there to, to get to the heart of the matter. So, as your moderator, I want to clear the way for people so they can get through the procedure and get to the, and get to the substance. I think that's, that's one of my responsibilities as moderator. So, a couple of questions that perennially come up on our agenda can't be answered the way they're phrased. And one of them is, "What action shall the town take in regard to the printed report?" Members of the Assembly, at some point, or the moderator says, "Well, there's no question to answer here. What do we do?" Well, then we need to amend the question. It's not even, we have to amend the question. So before we can even get going, and certainly before we can finish, we just need to amend the structure of the sentence itself. That, by saying, "Shall the town..." We usually end up at this point. "Shall the town approve the printed report with the amendments as stated, you know, previously?" There are usually some amendments that are made, some revisions and so forth. But I just want to advise you that that's, in my opinion, one place where we can make an improvement. Just come out by saying, "Shall the town approve the printed report?" And as moderator, I'll say, this is usually the point in the meeting where people can make suggestions. If there has been a, an error in math, if someone's name is spelled wrong, errors and omissions, we can correct them by amendments here. But it, by, by phrasing it as a question, we can answer with a yes or no. And ultimately, that's what it comes down to. It can get us, get us to the heart of the matter quicker. And another one that usually follows that same form that can't be answered right out of the gate is, "What amount shall the town apportion for the highway budget or the general budget?" It's, it's, we usually end up flipping our books open and looking at a number that's already in the report, that's part of the budget. So, I don't know if, as a practical matter, we can put that right, right into the, into the article itself. Again, that, that could save us time where we then have to, sometimes by unanimous consent, turn to the Select Board, turn to somebody to offer an amount to place in that essentially blank. So...
The only glitch with that is they had, those things get approved at the meeting.
At the meeting.
So we can't, and, so that, it's double dipping. So, your town report and it can't have everything listed twice. And if it's listed twice, technically, they can come back and ask for it twice. And so if we prove it at the meeting and it's in the town report printed that way, we're approving it twice. So those articles that get approved at town meeting are not in your budget. They are removed from your financial statement. So they're not calculated twice. That's why, yes.
Well, what if, well, I, I won't take up more time here. Maybe we can come back to it. Because I did a search last year to see if any other town phrased their budget question like this. And in my research, I could find none. And sometimes it's good to be unique. And I think our town is unique in a lot of the best ways. But I just want to make sure that we're not being unique in this, in this, in this instance for the wrong reason. So, I, I'll, I'll do some more research and talk to you about it. I'll see if there's...
When we start typing up the articles, yeah, we should all meet that way. Yeah.
And you could confer with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
Good one.
So that you're legally...
Okay.
I'll check with Secretary of State's office also.
Okay, yeah, those are two good places to...
Great. Okay. That's...
So if you have wording, Stephen, that you can share with us, the board and blah, then they could submit that to the LCT.
Okay.
And they would, the lawyers there would give a judgment on it.
Right. Okay. And again, all, all this is intended to avoid unnecessarily, unnecessary procedural stuff, just so we can talk about the...
The meat.
We've got to keep the moderator cool, right?
Yeah, I don't want any more. I have enough trouble getting through it. I don't need more. So, thank you very much for hearing me out here tonight.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Gray, would you please give us the start of your updates?
So what I'd like to do is, is start with the local hazard mitigation plan, the, the award amount of money that the town, and actually, a lot of towns in Vermont got, or just got notified about. And then move on to the bylaw modernization grant and then the two road issues, so we can kind of slide into Alfie's report.
Thank you.
At the same time. So, the local hazard mitigation plan will be outdated as of February of next year. And in hindsight, we probably should have started working on it a year ago. But as long as we're working on it, we're still okay. And the importance of that plan is that that's how we qualify for FEMA money. And this, this particular hazard mitigation plan is kind of overseen by FEMA through the Vermont Emergency Management Department. So the Vermont Emergency Management Department has been waiting for FEMA to award money to the state so that they could pass it out to the towns. So we have been awarded $9,862.50 towards any work, funding for the work on the revision and reappraisal of the plan. It's, it's a 75%, 25% match. So FEMA will give us 75% and then the town has to come up with 25%. The local match would be $3,287.50. So the total for the project would be $13,150. Our town match can be a kind of an in-kind thing with any volunteer or town staff that are involved with it. We would keep a record of their time. And that would count towards the town's, the town's match. Skip and I worked on it the last time. It's due, to be renewed every five years. I vaguely remember the process. But it's similar to any other, like a town plan or if there's, we would be doing some surveying just to get a sense of what people would want to have in there. We would hold hearings. It has to be eventually a draft written that's vetted, probably by somebody from the Vermont Emergency Management. It has to be approved by the Select Board. And then eventually FEMA will approve at the end. So anyway, so, so we have this money. And it would be hubus to get started on it as soon as possible, maybe after town budget work and the holidays are passed. And what I'm thinking is, is trying to find people in town that would be willing to be on a committee to do the work. Select Board, I mean, last time it was basically Skip and I as Select Board members, we were both on the Select Board then. But we have a Emergency Management Director now, who does like, would like to be on it. I can think of a couple of other people, but I was hoping that the Select Board might come up with some other names or just other things suggested here tonight. I would be willing to make phone calls. Couple other, we have a couple, like Norman Hackett, and we might be able to convince him to help. Skip might be willing to help, but he's pretty busy with FEMA. And I don't want to intrude on his time too much. But, and I would love to have some, some younger folks involved or Select Board. I think Diana mentioned that she might be interested, but I'm not sure. So, yeah, so that's, that's going to be a project for, for next year. We'll have basically a year to do that. And I'm not saying that we would use or need all of the money that's been awarded to us. But whatever amount we get from FEMA, we would have to come up with a match of 25%. So that's pretty much it for the, the local hazard mitigation plan. If there are any questions at all or... Good, okay. So, moving down the list of the bylaw modernization grant, which is something we have discussed with the Select Board, have approval to apply for it. So, at some point in December, which is kind of halfway there now, we should get some notification about whether or not we would be awarded the grant application that we submitted. We submitted a, an application for $20,000 and that's a 10% town match. And again, it can be in kind for volunteer folks. And the grant is basically to help us get started on, and if we're lucky, cover the work of revising and getting renewed approval for our, the town zoning ordinance, which was last done in 1973 with a few small amendments. So it's kind of outdated. We did, in the application, we were greatly assisted by the Regional Planning Commission. And there was a, a check on the application. Would you want to have the Central of the Regional Planning Commission serve as your agent?
Yes.
So we did check that. So, we will be working closely with CVRPC in, in the work on the zoning ordinance revisions. And again, it's a similar process to the town plan for this local hazard mitigation plan, getting input from folks in town, pulling hearings. And, and then, you know, taking information that we gather from the town folks, revisions, blah, blah, blah. And of course, having all of the things that the state would want to see in there to make sure that those are there. make sure that those are there. This, this grant application was pretty much, it was obvious that the focus was on housing and, um, which is much needed. So in the grant application, you know, um, we kind of pushed the housing part of the town plan and, um, and the fact that the zoning ordinance doesn't address some, some of the more lingering, or really doesn't address anything beyond, um, any supplemental housing for, for donors, so. But I, I'm not really sure if we'll get this grant or not, especially with the housing emphasis, but we should know before the month is over. And then if we do, it will be the planning commission that will be, be doing the book on that, on the zoning ordinance, which we're all really thrilled and just can't live without giving, especially the contentious hearings of, um, so any questions about that at all?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so down to the road stuff. Let me get my glasses out for that. So the first thing, um, let's see. So I'd like to talk about the Valley Lake Road culvert, um, because there's some new and significant things happening with that. We did finally get, um, the design, uh, work from Ruggles Engineering, Nate Seacard. And we have a kind of the end of this year, the end of this month to submit the, uh, the grant, um, report so that the town can get reimbursed. Fortunately, we just have to copy a couple of, copy the invoice and a couple of checks that Randy's written and we send it to Logan Perrin at District Seven and he will do the rest for us. So it'll be very easy to meet our deadline. Randy and I are going to meet this week and we'll do that. So, um, what Nate came up with for the total of the project, um, is 2,000, 2,078,524. So, um, and then his charge for the design work was $5,000. So, um, and it's a 10% match, so the town is going to be paying $500 towards that grant. And this is with District Seven. We are now part of District Six. So this is an old grant award that we received that's been three years in the, partly due to my own procrastination and then some other sort of blips along the way. But it's, it's here now, we're good. So the next step with this would be to apply next year to V-Trans, to District Six of V-Trans for V-Trans Structures Grant. And the applications will come out in February and then there, the applications will come out to the towns and be sent from V-Trans. The town has until April 15th to submit an application. So what we'll be doing is taking the design work, the hydraulic charts, et cetera, everything that Nate put together, um, and submitting a grant application to the Vermont Structures Grant through V-Trans for the actual implementation of the project. So, and I can talk a little bit more about what Nate has suggested. I know we did meet with Alfie and, um, did take Alfie's concerns about the, um, sort of non-practical aspect of a cement box culvert, which is sort of the standard, which is what's happening here in the village right now. So Nate came up with a different plan. So, um, so that's kind of an update on that. And obviously, if the select board wishes to, we will make and apply for that Structures Grant in the spring. So the other part on the agenda, people were just curious about, um, the other grant project, road projects that we have out. And I have, I did send an email back in October to everybody and then I resent it, um, a couple of weeks ago. But I thought I would just go over it in the meeting because there still seem to be some questions about it. So right at the moment, um, the town has, um, three, uh, grant programs pending that we've been awarded or designated that we've been awarded, um, for three different projects. They were going to happen this summer and then the flood happened and all plans for road work got thrown out the window and deal with fixing the roads from the front. But these are the grants. So one is a municipal roads general permit grant, Grantson Aid, what it's called. This is funded through the state. And so we have a, an initial grant for fiscal year '23 for work on the county road. A lot of that work did get done last summer before the flood, but it never got finished. And we've got an extension on that for finishing the work next summer and getting a report in before the end of the fiscal year.
Was that the ditching, Michael?
Pardon?
Was that for ditching?
Well, that's what pretty much was happening along County Road, yeah. I think there were, might be a couple culverts that were put in, but.
Yeah, there's some burn removal also. Yeah, so that's an extra.
So that grant was for $27,000 with a $6,750 town match, which is pretty much usually paid for with labor from the road crew, equipment use, rental, materials, et cetera. So that's one, one of three. And that has been budgeted at least a couple times.
Yes.
So then we did get another Grantson Aid award for fiscal year '24, which we're in right now. And that has, where the work will be done has yet to be determined. But that work would need to be completed with a report completed, um, September 30th of 2024. And that grant is for $18,000 with a $4,500 town match. And then the third grant, uh, road work project that we have pending is the East Hill Project through a Better Roads Grant. And that's for $14,000 with a $3,500 town match. And the end date for that is, um, September 30th of 2024. So, um, we had picked a spot, sections of road to work on, um, but yeah, we never really got to them. So that's a project waiting to happen and, um, so those are the three. And Randy, when we get on Wednesday, we can check the old budgets and make sure that, um...
Yeah, because we've budgeted twice. We've raised that money twice.
Yeah.
For the, the kind, the match.
Okay. Yeah, so I would assume that if we've raised the money already, then that it doesn't need to be in the new budget for fiscal year '25.
The match does not.
Does, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Any questions about those at all?
Are there more grants that we're applying for?
That's up to the road crew.
These are, well, I'm just thinking these are.
That's a pretty full slate.
It is, it's a lot of work.
But that's, that's totally, I mean, there is, there will be by the time next summer rolls around, um, there will be fiscal year '25 Grantson Aid availability, yeah. So, and you know, we can look towards next year. We can, we'll figure that out and it'd be totally up to what the road crew wants to, to do.
How many times can these grants be extended?
Twice. Just once. And usually, I mean, we had a, for the county road, the fiscal year '23 grant, um, we had a great excuse. I mean, the flood, uh, there were a lot of extensions for, um, because, you know, the road crews just had to focus on fixing roads.
Yeah.
So, but that's the only time, and that's the only time we've ever asked.
Oh, okay. My, because my next question was going to be, if we ask too many times, do we get put way down on the ladder?
No, it's best not to ever be in the position to ask.
Okay.
In my opinion, yeah. The Grantson Aid thing is a yearly thing, every fiscal year. The others are more special projects.
Okay. For the work this plan for moving the curve on Valley Lake Road, is that something that we either have already applied for a grant for or could apply for a grant?
That's not a grant.
It's not a grant.
There's no grant.
Okay. That's unfortunate.
That's how it works.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if the Grantson Aid project, if you could tell, convince them that you're fixing the erosion on the old part of the road by putting a new part of the road.
Yeah, it's a slippery slope.
So that, that's pretty much everything that I think was on my list coming up.
Thank you, Michael.
Sure.
Uh, may we have the vote commissioner's report, please?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen.
Take good care. So. Thank you, Mr. Larry.
Winter's here, as we all know.
It's, it's been here.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
It's not a trip. About every Monday.
Every Monday.
Every Monday, yeah.
Monday is probably becoming your favorite day to work.
Yeah, right.
It's my favorite day to keep my kids home from school.
And not have power.
And not have any power.
Yeah.
I, I had power. I never did lose power this Monday.
You're kidding?
No, I was totally.
So you're the one.
Had everything right.
You should have gone to your house.
Yeah, you should have. Did it, was it, didn't, maybe it's gone when I get home, I don't know.
Oh, no.
I didn't lose it this time.
Did you not?
Nope.
That's great.
They lasted, but for a shorter chunk of time.
No, not at all.
Awesome.
That's awesome.
They're getting better.
Oh, the trees are all red.
Yeah, actually, all red, like old dead trees, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all in my driveway. Mr. Larry, please continue.
So nothing real major. We, we did do, finished the sand pile after working on it, after the flood work. I just wanted to focus on that. So that's done. We've completed the contract with gravel construction. And then, so I did talk with, um, the town administrator, manager for Hardwick about Westwood Berry. There was questions last meeting of that and we are all set. He's there keeping the price the same.
Great.
And I don't know, did he send you anything yet? He said he, he said he was going to that next day, but that was Friday and then, so it's coming, he's working on it. Uh, but he's, he's honoring the same price and everything is, everything is fine there. I s, I don't know what conditions of roads and road scheduling means, that's on the agenda, but.
I, I have an idea. Um, so Diana's passed me a few comments from people in town who've been complaining that, you know, it's such and such time of day and their road hasn't been plowed yet. So I, I think it's kind of a question of like, what should the expectation be as far as timing goes on, you know, which, which roads?
Well, it depends on which road. And it also depends on a lot of what happens in the morning.
Yes.
Uh, we have three jobs.
Didn't really start snowing until like 3:00 AM.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, this morning was challenging because it didn't start until, until late and then it carried on throughout the morning.
You guys were out early. I heard a truck go by at like.
Yes.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we started at four. And, uh, then one truck got stuck very early in the morning on Keene Farm Road. And so that throws all the routes off. It's not just one route, it throws them all off because one truck has to go into the rescue of that truck. And this morning, it was the truck that went there, which was my, my little one, wasn't enough. So I had, I had to pull the other, the second truck off, their route, to come and pull it out. And that wasn't enough either. So we came up on it. So now we're, now we got three routes that are behind schedule. But I can't, I, I couldn't, I didn't think I could just stop. You know, I wanted to try to get that truck out and get it rolling, get it back on. So that's what, that's how I explained this morning's lateness, but school was already canceled, so that, you know, uh, that had no bearing on that. Last Monday, we were late, um, because there was no power. And so if there's no power, I can't call anybody. I had no power at my house. I, there was no power until I got to the shop where we have a generator. And then, of course, Timmy lives in the woods like the rest of us and he had no power either. So, I mean, cell phones are great, but if you don't have power or, or Wi-Fi, they're, they're worthless. So, you know, I start calling, I start calling the guys at four. And then if I have to drive here to make a phone call, that's a half hour later and it's a half an hour for them to come, now you're an hour late. Getting started. And, and I'm not going to sit here and keep making excuses, but that's, these storms that we are getting are not normal storms. They're wet, heavy. We're not only pushing wet, heavy snow and the mud underneath it, but we're also, we have also have limbs falling in our windshield and we have to keep stopping to push them out. All this takes time.
And power lines down?
Power lines down. County road, there was a pole snapped off, so that route had to go around. Could go, only go so far to one way and then come in the other way, turn around, again, it all takes time. So I, I mean, I get it. I get the concerns that people want to be out at eight o'clock in the morning, but that would be great in the best, in the best of all worlds, but it's, it's, these storms are not the typical. They're, they're just not.
They're our new normal, though.
They're our new normal and that's what we have to get ready for, correct? So, yeah, I mean, and it's, it's all about the timing for these storms too. You know, like Chris said, it starts, if it starts at three in the morning.
Three in the morning.
And it carries on hot and heavy throughout the morning commute, well, some of those roads aren't going to get treated. That we can't do everywhere at the same time.
Yeah, same way.
Um, this morning, like I said, we were stuck, so it was continuing to snow. It doesn't stop snowing just because our trucks aren't rolling. And our, our roads got covered up again. So we're, we're doing the best we can. I, I am starting to call the guys a little bit earlier in the morning so that we can get ahead for the buses, uh, to try to alleviate that. Again, the buses are our priority. That's where we spend our time first and then we go to the secondary roads. Does that cover that line?
I think so, yeah. It, it answered any questions that I had, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we on the new truck?
Uh, new truck is supposed to land at the body shop, um, this coming week.
Okay. So still, we're still. We're still a month and a half or two months off.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they said they would do it as fast as they can, but there's, you know.
Well, if we land it by February, that would be great.
I'm figuring mud season. I'm figuring we'll have it for mud season just because the, we're still having supply chain issues. We're still having, you know, uh, so.
Okay.
But we did put a bunch of money into the 2013, unfortunately, but it should be ready to carry on.
To get, carry, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Larry.
Sure.
Other questions?
There was just the Valley Lake Road curve. Is that, well, the question on here says how much should be budgeted? Is that, um, I think we're going to talk about that more, right? At the budget meeting?
Yeah, I think we have to do that in a budget meeting.
Okay, got it.
Because we really don't have a number.
Not exactly. I mean, we've got a, we've got a guess, we've got an estimate.
Yeah, we have an estimate.
We don't.
But we really don't have one. I think we have to put that off.
Yeah, sure.
To be honest, I just don't think we know enough. All right. Thank you, Mr. Larry. Recovery officer's report. Thank you, Mr. Larry.
I have one.
So what I, what I prepared tonight was this roadmap indicating where we are in, uh, this process. So the disaster was declared in July 14th. Applicants. So the disaster was declared in July 14th. Applicants briefing was at this first. We requested. We requested to FEMA that we wanted to apply for reimbursement for our funds. We had a kickoff meeting September 7th at FEMA. And we've been doing damage inventories, which are discrete locations in Woodbury where the roads were damaged. So we completed 62 of those. And as it says, the week of December 4th, we started formulating projects. So right now there are five projects, which incorporates 32 of the damage inventories. There are five more projects that FEMA has to create and that would encompass 25 more damage inventories. It is a damage inventory that we have to redo and that focuses on culverts because culverts for some reason are standalone items within FEMA. And even though it's part of a road repair, they want to create a separate project for it. So anyhow, we have to make out a, another damage inventory for that. So where are we in terms of project completions? We have one project and that is the Cabot Road Project. And that's for a total of $16,000. So so far we've answered 32 of the 32 questions they require for this particular project. We've completed of the 12 documents we've completed, 12 documents we've completed 10. So Danielle and I are hoping to get this project into FEMA tomorrow. To complete, totally complete. And we'll see how long FEMA takes to review the project and then put money against the project so we can start the funds rolling into, into the town. I'm thinking that's going to take anywhere from a month to 45 days. So it's, it's a two-stage thing. FEMA has to approve it. Then they send the money to the state and then the state, the state will send the money to us. Okay. And similar to the COVID money we got, so Brandy's, well, we're good. I think Brandy and I are sitting in on a meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock. Webinar. So no more of that. So we have a meeting, we had a meeting last, last Tuesday, which was pretty interesting. FEMA came, actually came out to Woodbury and sat down with us, which was pretty nice, yeah. And we've had a couple of Zoom meetings in the interim, which have lasted three hours, which are just mind numbing. Zoom meetings. And we have another meeting queued up for December 18th. Because Danielle and I want to get these projects and the essential elements of information completed for these projects by the end of, by the end of January, just to get them off our plate. So we're making progress, albeit it's glacial. Glacial, but they keep me moving the goalposts. So we're kind of used to that by now. So we continue. We're making progress, you know, as it, as fast as we would like it, you know, but steady. And we'll just keep at it.
Thank you, Mr. Lizzie.
Thank you.
A lot of work. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. It was fun.
Doesn't sound fun.
We're going to have to wait on the personnel policy until Diana is here with us. Because we can't do that without Diana. So I'll take any other public comment at this point. Otherwise I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I cannot be at the December 27th meeting since having knee surgery that day. So I'm sure he's going to be here and. Can we?
So I will be there for the December 27th meeting.
Oh, okay.
To make sure that there's two of us.
Awesome. Cool. Thanks.
Hearing that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will second the motion.
You have to make the motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
No, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Oh, that's so quick. We're getting better at this.